this May 9th of 2023. This morning, in place of invocation, we will have a moment of silence that will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Deputy Phyllis Bradley. Ms. Bradley, you could feel free to approach. For those of you willing, please join me in a moment of silence.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, and our meeting is now officially called to order. Commissioners, we have a number of presentations before us today, including one that we will need to add on by four fifths of vote. That is to present certificates of achievement to the Kell Longhorn Boys and Girls Basketball Teams. Commissioners, I move, or may I call on you to make the motion? I'm okay?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioners, I move that we add this presentation to our list of presentations.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question.
It will be first.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Richardson being absent. With that, those here for that initial presentation for Kell, please join us up front. And that presentation will be brought by Commissioner Burrow. And why don't we give them a round of applause while they're up here? These are our state champions in both boys and girls basketball. This is awesome.
Wow, there's some tall players in here today.
He represented the group.
Well, it is my honor to recognize the Kell High School Boys and Girls State Champions. And their coaches. So this is a first for Kell on boys or girls basketball to win a state 5A championship. So we are honored to have them in the room today, and I couldn't be more proud of you. It's great. Great accomplishment. So I'm gonna read out one certificate and then hand them out with the help of the coaches. Okay, because my list is boys first, we're gonna go with the boys. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you for your exemplary performance this season, contributing to the win of a 5A state championship against Eagles Landing. These achievements were possible through your skill under the leadership of head coach Jermaine Sellers. So the first certificate goes to Isaiah Wood. And then we have, these aren't in order, Parrish Johnson. Aaron Smith. He's at the back. Julia Strayhorn. Congratulations. C.J. Brown. Landon Duncan. Oh, you're right in front of me. Peyton Marshall. How tall are you? Our seven footer here. Way to go. Connor Stefalaris. Connor Stefalaris? Did I say it right? T.J. Murray. T.J.! Noah Bolton. Coach Sellers. Thank you. Chris Markuski. Markuski, sorry. And Theron Cooper. That's you. Who's that?
Adam Barnes, manager.
Adam Barnes. And Dakota Sims. They're team managers. So, would you like to say a few words, Coach?
Just thank you for this honor and recognition for these young men. They truly worked hard all year. And to achieve this goal is real monumental, not only for these young men, but for the Kell community and the family of Cobb County. So we appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, now for the girls. I know Coach Kendra Bailey is here, so I will give her hers first. And I'll just read yours. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you on successfully serving as coach of the Kell High School Lady Longhorns Basketball Team and leading them to win the state championship. With your guidance, the team was able to build physical fitness, emphasize teamwork, and enhance strategic thinking. Your coaching skills and expertise helped the team achieve greatness, and we thank you for your many contributions to better our youth and community. We wish the program continued success. So you know what that means. Next year, you have to do back-to-back. And are they in the audience? Well, we have Crystal Henderson and Jeremiah Gregory on their way. So if they don't make it, you'll take it to them. Thank you all for being here and congratulations, and we wish you all the best next year.
Everyone below seven feet in the front. All right, good. Here we go. Three, pull up your certificates. Smile if you can. There you go. All right. Not in front of your face. All right, here we go. Three, two, and I got it. Thank you.
Our next proclamations will be brought by Commissioner Sheffield.
Just give them a few minutes to... Okay, good morning, everyone.
My first of three proclamations will be to the National, for National Police Week. If we have someone from the sheriff's office and the police office to join me. Thank you, ma'am. How are you? Good, I'm doing well. Come on, hey! beige. This is fantastic. Okay. In 1962, May 15th became the National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which it falls becomes National Police Week. The week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. The 35th Annual Candlelight Vigil will be held on Saturday, May 13th, in remembrance for those lost. Currently, there are 23,785 names engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 14th through the 20th, 2023, as National Police Week, and honor the ultimate sacrifice made by those officers who have lost their lives in service to the public.
Good morning. We'd like to thank the Commissioners for the recognition and the support that we continue to have from our Commissioners. On behalf of Sheriff Craig Ornes and the entire Cobb County Sheriff's Office, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Likewise, Commissioner Sheffield and the entire Board of Commissioners, we thank you for this. And I'll say this, after last week's events, Sheriff's Office and, of course, the Police Department did a fantastic job. And at some point, it takes men and women who will confront an individual who has shot five people face-to-face alone. And that's what happened this week. Thursday morning, after everything was done, after your brain quit thinking, and you woke up, and it was dark and cool, and we were going to the prayer breakfast at the Galleria, which we were able to have because of the capture of that individual. Not sure we would have had it had we not captured that individual. But walking in alone, thanking God that we were able to capture that individual, it hit me pretty hard that no law enforcement officers were killed. That individual had a distinct advantage over us. He knew where he was. He would see us coming from a distance away. But every law enforcement officer that was out there went home safe that night. I realized that I took them for granted Wednesday night when we were trying to figure out how to capture him. But there were prayers in the incident command room for these officers who were in the field, especially when we got the call, which we thought was it. And so somebody asked in September, when the two deputies were lost, what can we do to honor the fallen heroes? And I would say honor them now, while they're standing in front of you. And for that, I echo the sentiments of Chief Deputy in that we do appreciate our community's support very much, and we can't really function without it. These officers know that they are well-supported in Cobb County, and that's a tribute to our community. So thank you, Commissioners and Chairwoman, and to our community, and especially to our officers. Thank you.
Now we're seven feet tall.
Let's give our law enforcement another round of applause as they exit. Thank you guys so much for keeping us safe. We do not take that for granted. Thank you so much. Okay, National Providers Appreciation Day is unique clay here. There she is. I think it's her. Yeah. Hey, how are you? Good morning. Oh, who's your furry friend?
Nala.
Hi, Nala. Oh, okay. Oh, she's beautiful. Okay. So we are recognizing national provider appreciation. And in the mid-1990s, a group of New Jersey daycare workers started Provider Appreciation Day on Day on the Friday before Mother's Day to recognize those who take care of children whose parents are away at work. Daycare workers throughout the nation provide an essential service for both families and the economy, enabling people to continue their careers while being assured their kids are safe and supervised. We, the Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 12 as Provider Appreciation Day in Cobb County and call for the public to recognize and express their thanks to those who care for their children. Thank you.
I do want to say thank you to the Commissioners here in Cobb County on behalf of all of the providers in the state of Georgia for the quality of care that we provide our students. Childcare is so vitally important, and we thank you guys because you guys are about to give us some funds. So we want to thank you. And I do have some, I do have some gifts.
Okay, okay. Oh, thank you. Oh, this is cute.
This is from New Orleans. Just getting one is like a surprise.
Oh, this is very nice. Look at this. This is my face right before zoning. So thank you so much for that. Thank you. And I also have one for Pamela, which she's not here, I don't think.
She is.
Oh, she is? Where is she? Come on up. Yeah. And we can take a picture together. And here's yours. Do you want to hold yours, or do you need my help? Here, I'll grab that for you.
This is such an honor. It's just an honor.
Okay. Should we move over? Are we doing okay? Here, I'm gonna let you hold it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're very welcome. And Unique, you hang tight. I have one more for you. Okay, and ladies and gentlemen, this is Ms. Unique Clay, and she is a Mableton resident who began homeschooling her sons after facing challenges finding quality childcare for them. In 1997, she founded Unique's Early Development Center in Mableton. Her school was one of the first to participate in the Quality Rated process under the Georgia Department of Early Care and Learning, earning star ratings in 2012. Her center has since reached a three-star rating and was honored last year by the Georgia Department of Early Care and Learning for maintaining a rating for the past 10 years. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Unique Clay's work on behalf of the community, having provided 26 years of service educating young minds and setting them on the road for the future. Congratulations. Do you need a hand?
All right, and our last presentation for this morning will be provided to those here on behalf of Economic Development. Please join me up front. Good morning. We have Sabrina Wright with Economic Development and Ms. Tara Rogers, yes, also with Economic Development. Want to make sure I get the department correct. This is actually Economic Development Week, and we have a proclamation and recognition of that. Whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional organization dedicated to serving economic developers, it provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training, advisory services, publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation. And whereas economic developers promote well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base, we appreciate that. And whereas they stimulate and support entrepreneurism to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy, economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs and develop vibrant communities. And whereas, excuse me, economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, county, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim this week, May 8 through the 12, 2023, as Economic Development Week and remind residents of the importance of this work, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. This the ninth day of May 2023. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll let you share a little bit about your team and the work that you do.
Okay. I see my other team members made it. Brittany Rasmussen, if you could join us up front. Speaking of the childcare proclamation, she had to drop a baby off this morning, so. Exactly. So Cobb County Economic Development Team consists of the three of us here, Sabrina Wright, Tara Rogers, and Brittany Rasmussen. We work every day to support the businesses in Cobb County by communicating with businesses and building those relationships with them so that they know that Cobb County is here to help their business grow and expand. We do that through a lot of partnerships with other economic development agencies throughout the county and the region. And we just would like to thank you, Chairwoman Cupid, as well as the entire Board of Commissioners, for your support for our team and for all that we do, and understand that we would not be able to do our work without your support. So thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. We're just excited. We can call you a team. We've been building on this for a while. So thank you for making us look so good in this room. Our final presentation of the morning is to receive an update on Truist Park and the Battery.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We are here today to give our annual update on the Battery and Truist Park. I'm going to kick it over to Mike Plant to kind of give you some of the highlights for the last year, as well as what we're looking forward to for 2023. And then I'm going to close it out with some really good financial updates. We have some very exciting news to share. So just, just here you go, Mike. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'll be your clicker.
I'll turn that thing backwards. Good, good morning, Commissioners. A great day for us, as Bill said, some exciting news to share. And as I stand here today, we're playing very well on the field, and we're happy about that. Long way to go, but you're going to see some incredible impact numbers. I think, again, just proof that the risk and the faith and the confidence you had in us nine years ago is definitely providing a lot of impact and to Cobb County and the community in a bunch of different ways. So just to kick it off, a few highlights. We had 10 million people, visitors, fans, that came to the Battery and Truist Park last year. That puts us up in the top five of all major destinations in the country. And I think a really important part of that 10 million is to understand that approximately 80% of those people, the 10 million, came from outside of Cobb County. It's been said a lot that many times we're just moving, moving dollars around Cobb, but 80% of that 10 million comes from outside the county. So we're attracting obviously a lot of, a lot of impact and a lot of income from outside the county. We've hosted almost 500 events again last year, and obviously, that's a big uptick from the COVID years where we went down obviously significantly. And we're adding, we're adding a significant amount of square footage by the end of this year. We're essentially completely leased out at 100% throughout the entire property. So results are definitely impactful and very positive. Okay, Bill, next. One of the things I think we all pride ourselves on as an organization is, again, playing well on the field and expanding our Braves brand throughout the Southeast United States, but also giving back to our communities. We provided approximately $500,000 of support to Cobb, 16 different Cobb nonprofits, school system, fire, police, and the military in a number of different ways. And you see a few of those on the board and on the slide. So we will continue to be great partners with Cobb. We do it in close collaboration many times with the Commissioners, and you can count on us in the future to continue to support this community in many different ways. We too, as you recognized earlier, are very appreciative of law enforcement, both the sheriff's office, the police, and the fire. They're incredible supporters of ours and providing a safe environment for those 10 million people to come to the Battery in Truist. Okay, next. And then just a few things coming in 2023. We haven't stopped yet. We have a quarter million square foot Truist Securities Tower, bringing 1,000 new jobs eventually when that building is completed to the Battery. We have a couple of new concepts that are being completed now, as I said earlier, that will take us to a completely leased out throughout the property. We plan to exceed that 3.1 million fans that attended our games last year. We've already sold out 12 games, so we're on track to do that again. And then we're going to start in collaboration with Goldenrod, the Henry Project, which is two huge towers of apartments, another hotel, and some condos. That project will kick off in June of this year, and we're getting close coordination with them because of the proximity across the street on Circle 75. So again, a lot going on still, a lot of growth in front of us, and continuing the numbers that Bill's going to show you are just going to continue to grow and provide great impact for the county. So appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So we always like to start off our presentation on the financial side with the original baseball. So one of the parts that we always want to remind everybody is that the local contribution for the stadium and the investment was capped at $300 million. And with that original baseball came the original projections from 2015. So we have the annual debt service at the very top, and then we had the breakdown of the revenues that we were going to use to support the annual debt service. So with that, we have hotel motel tax, general fund property tax of $6.4 million annually. Then we had the property tax associated with the Cumberland Special Service District 2, the $3 room night that is paid by hotels within the Cumberland Special Service District 1, and the rental car tax. So just take a look at this slide and kind of see how we walk through this. From 2015 to 2022, the general fund projection was 6.4 million. The actual used for debt service was 2.1 million in 2022. Of that, the Braves and the properties at the Battery paid $2.5 million. So on the next slide, we're going to really talk about this is really a milestone moment for us in Cobb County as we netted $400,000 above and beyond the requirements for the debt service for the first time in the since this investment began. So not only have you now netted more money coming into the county, but you are also not paying the $6.4 million that was projected for the 30 years of those bonds. So we'll walk through that, and we can see some of the impacts as we go through. We all know 2020 was a pandemic year, and just take a look at some of those numbers, and you'll see the impacts. Pandemic year, hotel motel revenues that we were able to use for the debt service fell to just over 400,000. And then we saw some of the others decline as well. But with that being said, in the worst of times, this investment still was able to make, meet, and exceed the obligations that we had in front of us. So as we come out of the pandemic, the numbers improved in 2021, and again, improve even further in 2022. Okay, so there's a lot of debate on this slide, so I want to take a moment to kind of walk through this. The top blue line is the $6.4 million that we said we would use out of the general fund for the next 30 years of these bonds. The reddish-orange line, sorry, you can debate on whatever color that is, shows what we actually paid. So you can see we started at 5.3, and we were on a downward trend until the pandemic hit in 2020. It took a little bump in the road, and then we continued down to 2.1. And again, of that 2.1, the properties within the Battery paid 2.5. That brings us to our green line at the bottom. So you see, I've highlighted that number in red. It's 400K negative. That means $400,000 went back into the county above and beyond the debt service. So that is a very big milestone moment. I remember Chairman Boyce had that thought of, well, we're not going to do, we're not going to pay $6.4 million. The county's goal is to reduce the general fund impact, the impact to the residents. That is now to a positive number, where we are now bringing in more money. So countywide residents of Cobb County are not paying into the general, or sorry, the debt service for the bonds. So that is being covered by these revenue sources, as well as the property taxes paid by the Braves. So we like to show all three of these because there's varying perspectives, but these are the actual numbers as we walk forward. You can debate whether it's the 2.1 or the .04, but we view that as the overall net impact is .04 as a win to the county. Okay, the reason we're able to achieve that is the investment the Braves and their partners have made at the Battery. So this is some staggering numbers here as we kind of walk through this. Before the development, the value of that parcel was $5 million. At the end of 2022, it was 736 million. And that is, again, not the halo effect, that is simply the Battery. The property taxes paid by the Battery to Cobb County since 2015 is $18.4 million. Although we were one of the partner investor in this, there's other beneficiaries of this investment, including the Board of Education and the Cumberland CID. Since 2015, the Battery has generated $25.1 million to Cobb County Board of Education and $6.7 million to the Cumberland CID. In total, since 2015, that's over $15 million. Okay, I do apologize if these are a little hard to read in back, but I think these are important to know. These are the revenue sources, again, that we want to show the collection rates. Now, one of the things we showed this, and we showed the uses a minute ago, these are a little bit different. These are what we actually brought in. So we did want to take a moment to show you that because we did bring in some, in some years more, which added to some of our reserves in the Cumberland Special Service District, and we were able to help address those, use those reserves to cover, come through some of the pandemic and address some of the fluctuations that we saw. With that being said, one of the lines that does stand out is the Cumberland, sorry, the CSSD 2 property tax line. You'll see sustained growth, and then you'll see in 2022, you had a dip in that. So the reason that there was a dip, there was a settlement on appeals that was settled in 2022 related to prior years. So it did bring it down, but it is a one-time reduction, and we expect those to return to normal levels, actually increasing levels in 2023. But just take a look at the bottom of that screen on the bottom right, $99 million since 2015. And then with that, we've also had a decision we made as a board to how we were going to use the Cumberland CSSD funds, or sorry, the CSSD 1 funds, the $3 room night funds. So we, on a normal year collector, on $3.6 million several years ago, starting in 2019, we partnered with Cobb Travel and Tourism and began funding their, began funding some of their needs out of this pot of money as well. So you can see that as far as the collections go versus the uses. So I did want you to note that as we go through that, you're collecting about $3.6 million. We do use some of that for Cobb Travel and Tourism through fiscal year 2023. Now, we are, I know we have an agenda item later today to look at how we do that in the future. So that would have an impact on future numbers if that agenda item is successful. It would generate additional dollars that would be used to fund some of these impacts that we see within the stadium itself. that we see within the stadium itself, or sorry, within the Battery itself. Okay. All right, so this is an important slide because a lot of times this is overlooked. We talk about property taxes and how we pay for the debt service and the requirements of the Battery. However, these are revenues that are generated that are not used for that. These are generate, these are revenues primarily sales tax dollars, liquor by the drink, occupation taxes that are used to support county operations, and mainly through SPOST capital projects. And again, we are not the only beneficiaries of these dollars. So you can see in the, on the right side, you're going to see a column for Cobb County, Cobb County Board of Education, as well as the state. So in 2022, this generated, the Battery itself, $26.5 million to these three entities. Okay, that's 6.7, 6.8 million for Cobb County, 3.8 million for the Board of Education, and 15.8 million for the state, again, above and beyond property taxes. And since, for, for this period of time since 2018, it's over $91 million that have fed to help, help support Cobb County capital projects through SPOST, as well as Board, Board of Education capital projects as well. Okay, this is kind of the holistic picture here as we walk through this. These are all the revenue sources that the county has generated, or sorry, the Battery has generated for the county, Board of Education, the CID, the school district, and the state. So kind of as we walk through that, so just for this year, Cobb County generated $11.3 million. And you'll notice that property tax number is 4.1 because what we talk about, when we talk about how we fund the debt service, we're not including the amount that we generate in the fire fund and other funds throughout the county. So that's 4.1 in property taxes. The hotels located within the Battery itself generated 2.1 million for hotel motel and $3 room night. Business license, occupation tax, liquor by the drink, and so on, come down to 3 point, or sorry, 11.3 million. The Board of Education, again, not a primarily, primary investor in this partnership, but definitely a beneficiary as well as, as well as the CID and the state, generated 9.4, almost 9.5 million in fiscal year 2022. And then the Cumberland CID, 1.5 million, and then the Georgia, sorry, the State of Georgia, 15.8 million, for a total of $38 million in 2022. And that doesn't even include the annual rental payments that the Braves pay the county as a, as a part of that agreement. So with that, this is, this has been a huge success in 2022, 2022, as we move forward, and we really have achieved a milestone moment. Now, with that, we know we have some ways to go as far as additional funding that will go to help support the Battery. We have PD overtime, we have circulator, but right now, you just took $400,000 bite out of that apple. And as things continue to improve, the goal is to say there is no impact to the county whatsoever using these revenue sources and how we move forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board. Do you have any questions for either me or Mr. Plant? We're happy to answer and take your questions.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Mike, for that presentation this morning. It's always better to receive good news than not, and I'm happy to see the numbers as they are. From looking at the numbers over the years, it looks like things continue to trend in a positive direction, so we don't anticipate this is a unique year, but that we'll continue to see that.
Yes, I can tell you based on the numbers that we already have for 2023, trend is continuing.
Okay, very good. I see that it's surpassed the 2019 numbers, at least pre-pandemic numbers, which is really good.
Absolutely.
So thank you. We're, I think, see a lot of value that is coming to the county and also to the residents in the community from the development. And that's just monetary. We certainly know the energy that that site has created, and also the ancillary development that's occurred around the site is because people want to be near that development. So it's very good to receive this positive report. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions?
Commissioner. It is Commissioner Richardson's district. Let me start with our district.
I just wanted to say congratulations on the milestone for all of us, and hopefully it is a trend that we see continue. There's, there's certainly, what you're seeing is the evidence of intentional work and collaboration, and I just really appreciate, and I think that's critical to making sure that these numbers trend this way. Thank you.
Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. Go Braves. This is great news, and I hope these slides will be made available public online, and if you could email them to us as well.
Yes, Commissioner.
For anyone else that's interested, because it's a lot of information, good information, but, you know, we like to review everything slide by slide. So this is great that our projections are way over and that the debt service is being done, and then some. I think it goes a long way to show the vision that Chairman Lee had back then with Mike and the Braves, and it's very exciting. So to, to seal this deal here and make it even better, we need another World Series championship.
Yes, we do.
Okay. And a parade?
We share that same vision.
We're looking forward to that, and maybe, maybe an All-Star game, just throw that in there.
Exactly.
Yeah. When is that coming?
She, the question was asked, when is that coming?
Stay tuned.
I thought we were slated for like 2026.
Don't know yet.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Gamble.
Yes, while this is all good news, and thank you, Mike, for sharing in that vision with former Commissioner Chair Tim Lee. Bill, this is where I think the constituents kind of get a little confused on how this is reported, because your final line shows a total revenue of $38 million. I don't doubt that $38 million is coming to the county, but where it gets confusing to many, and we hear a lot of kickback, is the actual impact to the general fund, which actually goes back to being just around the 11 million, but even some of those funds are restricted based on our agreement with the hotel motel tax and how those funds would be done. So in the future, just again, because we've got a lot of people that are getting very educated on our budgeting, is there a way that we can say, yes, this is the total impact? Yes, you've broken it out by schools, county, but the SPOST can't be used for the general fund?
Absolutely.
So the impact to the general fund, I think, is where people are more interested, and then also that, of course, impacts our payment.
Absolutely, Commissioner. We can, we can definitely show that a little bit different way. This was kind of our attempt at showing the impact of the general fund, is showing that first milestone of the 400K positive. But to your point, yes, we can add a slide in futures to just show you that impact because you are absolutely correct. On the last slide, oh, sorry, this is the countywide impact. And as you said, SPOST is different, but this was one of the areas we wanted to show is that some of these do go into the general fund, but some of the property taxes we mentioned goes to fire and other funds as we talk about that. So we want to show the global impact, but yes, we, we can give you that refined look at the general fund. And I think Commissioner Burrell, actually, when I met with her to discuss this, one of her requests as we move forward for the 2024 budget is going to show you how we plan to allocate those dollars budgetarily, and then you're going to add a slide to this in the future to show this is what we did budgetarily, this was the actuals, and you're going to get to see that impact as well. So that is something that we've committed to the board to add in our 2024 budget presentation, and we'll add the follow-up to that, put actuals with budget numbers when we do the update next year as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Sherrill.
I, I'd just like to add that this looks great, and for each year, it seems to build on itself, and it's getting better, so this is very encouraging. There's a lot of development at the Battery, and it's just having a ripple effect throughout the county. I'm excited about, I think it's the Hank Aaron or the Henry development, which will also have a trading floor, I, I think.
No, it's Truist Securities Headquarters will have the trading floor over a five-story parking deck.
Okay.
And that sits next to that quarter million square foot, their new headquarters. The Henry are the two towers with multifamily apartments, the new hotel, and then the condos on top of the hotel.
Right, okay. So I mean, this is, this is just fantastic. It's definitely something that that area needed. It really, it brought a lot of life to that area over the past several years, and, and I'm excited about what we're hearing, and I look forward to more good news.
And I would just close for me is to say thanks to all of you, and thanks to Jackie and her whole team. The reason this all works is because that collaboration and partnership is so strong and so supportive. We're, I think we've had over now 200 teams from all over the world have come to the Battery in Truist Park. We think we have the secret sauce, and they do too. And the one thing I tell them was what you'll, what you'll never have is that partnership that we have with the county. If you don't have that public-private partnership working together, you're not, you're going to fail. And fortunately, that's, that's the model of success because of that relationship and how closely we work together to achieve these results. So thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments or questions? Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we are now moving on to our public hearing. We have two matters. The first one is going to be brought by Community Development.
That's a tough act to follow there. Good to see, good to hear the good news. Okay, I'm Philip Westbrook, Senior Planner with Community Development, and I am here on behalf of Jessica Gwynne, who could not make it, our Agency Director of Community Development, could not be with us today. But the purpose of this item six is to conduct a public hearing and approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for a single-family residence at 101 Sherwood Lane. Applicant proposes to construct a new single-family home on 2.4 acres. The project proposes a total land disturbance area of 21,568 square feet with a total impervious area of 11,346 square feet. Both totals are within the maximum limits. The ARC has reviewed the development for compliance and has determined that the development is consistent with the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan, and we recommend that the Board of Commissioners open the floor for a public hearing and approve the certificate of compliance for construction subject to the guidelines of the Metropolitan River Protection Act and all applicable Cobb County development standards and regulations.
Thank you. For anyone desiring to participate in this public hearing, you are able to speak to this matter and this matter only for a maximum of three minutes. With that, I'll declare this public hearing open. Yes, sir, please approach. And I haven't seen you here before, so just make sure you state your name.
Good morning, Robert Patty. This is our property that my family's looking to build on, so I just wanted to say we did work with ARC to make sure we were abiding by all the requirements of the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan, as well as Cobb Stormwater Management, as that's the biggest concerns there, is protecting the hooch and runoff and, and stormwater. So I don't know if you have any questions. This is, they just asked me to be here and let you know we were looking to build, so.
Well, thank you for being here. You're one of the only people that I've seen come up and present their project, and I appreciate that.
Well, if I had to tell my wife that we got denied and I didn't show up, that would have been way worse.
You didn't give her your all, well.
So at least if I was here, I could say I tried.
All kinds of lies everywhere. We applaud you. Thank you for the job. Good job. We appreciate that. You're doing a good thing.
So.
If Commissioners have any questions for you after the hearing, we'll call you back up.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Are there any other speakers for our public hearing? All right, hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Philip? Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Our public hearing is closed. All right, we will move on to our next public hearing. That is to have a presentation of the strategic plan, and that will be, oh, excuse me, we have to take a vote, Philip. Philip, excuse me, I'm off, and it's okay. You want to make sure it passes, because you've got to carry this information back to Jessica. I don't want to.
Yes.
Commissioner, may you make the motion for this matter?
Sure. A motion to approve the certificate of compliance for the construction.
All right.
Second. Thank you. Do I have to specify the property? I mean, usually I don't specify the property, but.
I'll leave it up to.
Sufficiently identified and, and agenda item number six.
Agenda item six, thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's a motion. Was there a second?
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble, thank you. Any comments or questions? Call the question. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll hear from our Deputy County Manager with respect to the strategic plan.
Good morning, Chairwoman. Commissioners, Madam County Manager. Back in August, the Board approved a contract with Essentia to begin the development of our strategic plan for Cobb County Government. Since that time, go ahead to the next one, Brad. We have had over 5,000 sources of input from our residents, from our community leaders, and we have a draft final plan that is now available for comment. It is posted on our website at cobbcounty.org/strategicplan, where we encourage our, our residents to go in, review the plan, leave comments. They'll be submitted through a website, a link to our email on the website, but the Board also saw fit that we should have two public hearings to allow our residents to provide input on the draft final strategic plan. Just one slide on, on, before you open the strategic, the, the public hearing, these were the strategic outcome areas that at the end of the five-year period, which is governed by the strategic plan, we should unequivocally be able to say this is true. Now, under these, within this, in, within the strategic plan document, there are key success indicators applicable to each one of these. There are also strategies to achieve in these success indicators, and staff will even be drilling down deeper to come up with specific goals and objectives to get us to this point in the, in the future. So at this time, Madam Chair, I'd ask that you open the, the public hearing. We will be taking notes at this meeting as well as the, the second meeting in May, and then we will bring it back to you at a future date for approval.
Thank you, Director.
Yes, ma'am.
For anyone here in the public, this is your opportunity to speak to our county strategic plan. You will have a maximum of three minutes to address this matter and this matter only, and we will take an unlimited number of speakers. And I see some people in our audience digesting it, so I will give everyone a little bit of time if you'd like to look at what's on the screen here before I close out the public hearing. Good morning.
My name is Pamela Riordan, citizen of Cobb County. The only thing I really want to say about this is just like polling, whatever the outcome you want, you will get. It's the way the questions are designed. And I had answered these questions, and they are so biased, and you can just see where it's going and trick people to answer certain things, and it's really, in my opinion, not the opinion of the people who live in Cobb County. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Good morning.
Christine Rosman. It all looks good, and I concur with what Pam Riordan just said, but also in that, is we don't realize how much of an impact all the consulting companies that designed this had in this, because it, it kind of reeks of what they want more than what it represents what the Cobb citizens want. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I understand some people are still reviewing it? Matt, you can approach.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Segaw. I live in District One. I also honorably serve on the Transit Advisory Board, and yeah, I fully support the mission to make Cobb County the best place to live and work through an efficient, effective, and responsive government. responsive government that delivers quality services. And after reviewing this document, I believe that the strategic plan, combined with the comprehensive plan, lays a strategic foundation to make this county better. And I would like to just make a few minor suggestions to improve the strategic plan and make it more actionable. First, for each of these strategic goals and success indicators, we need a transparent, measurable, and actionable goals. I'm an analytics guy, and just knowing what those analytics are and what those measurements are would be very helpful, and they need to be transparent to the public and other stakeholders. And the document mentions a data, data dashboard, but I don't know if that is publicly available. I haven't been able to see that yet, and I would love to see what those baselines are for each of these goals. Second, although collaboration is mentioned as a bullet point in the context page, I'd like to highlight and prioritize that collaboration with cities will be paramount in achieving success. Every time I see one of these documents, I do a little, you know, the tool, the search tool, I look for cities are mentioned. I saw that cities aren't really mentioned that much in this document, and I know that combined their jurisdictions, their jurisdictions consist of a significant proportion of land and population in this county. And Chairwoman Cupid, I know that you've mentioned that regional partnerships are, are key in achieving regional goals, and we need to make sure that we prioritize developing deep collaboration with our cities to achieve these goals laid out in the strategic plan. And finally, it's also mentioned in the document that I want to highlight and prioritize, that all the strategies mentioned and the plans and studies and goals in the world mean nothing without the necessary staffing and funding to support it. And that concludes my comments, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Redmond. Let's have a few brief statements. I think it's important to not just acknowledge that growth is coming, but that the growth is already here and understand what it's made of. And it's important to know what resources are needed for what we have today and coming in the future. We are a large county, an extremely diverse one, that, and the needs of one part of the county are, are often completely different than another, and it's important to recognize that. It's also critical to have a plan to build connectivity to those, to not just those parts of the county, but also the region. We are not an island, and I think it is clear by now that Cobb plays a critical role, not just for the region, but in the entire state. One thing I've learned from Commissioner Richardson is the importance of combining connectivity and growth with empathy. And to truly have empathy, we, we have to not only speak with our community, but understand it in its entirety. This is why I've been so motivated to help and where I can, and I think that this plan continues that critical work. Finally, just thank you for all the time that it took to pull this together and the transparency in the process. I'm excited about the path forward here, and it will help in any way I can to help communicate this with our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Casey, now our public hearing is closed. Jimmy, if you can approach for a moment. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jimmy? I know we stated we're going to have two public hearings with respect to the strategic plan, so we'll be back at our night meeting. If anybody wants to digest this and come back with additional comments, please feel free to do so. I don't have the stats in front of me, but I think it'd be helpful in light of some of the comments to talk about the number of stakeholders that participated in this, so we can give a sense of community and citizen participation. I know that we did reach a number of statistical significance, but I don't have that number in front of me. I just prefer for us to speak to that data once we have it on hand.
Yes, ma'am. We'll have that at the presentation for the night meeting.
And I understand, too, that our staff will be going to retreat and working on metrics, as was stated. So we do have those measurable goals, and it is our intent to have those on a dashboard of sorts. Dr. McMorris, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Yes, we're going to be spending about a half a day or so just looking at measurable strategic objectives and strategies on each of these areas, and we will come back and share those with the Board. Once we get feedback from you all, then that dashboard will be available for the public.
Thank you. Go ahead. And I've also asked, too, if that could be shared with Commissioners so we can review and see if it has metrics that we would like to share to get a pulse on what's going on in each of those areas. You're pointing. I didn't see your hand. I only see you telling me to look down here. So.
We both raised our hands, but she went first.
Okay.
Are these, is the whole draft online?
Yes, ma'am.
And is there feedback available online or an email or?
Yes, ma'am. The, the, on the homepage, it's, the main box has got our, the strategic plan logo in it, but it's cobbcounty.org/strategicplan.
Okay.
And.
And feedback is available.
And if they have comments, click, and it crafts an email.
Okay. So we're still gathering information as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And comments. Thank you, Jimmy.
Commissioner Richardson.
And I definitely can understand the idea of having biased or leading questions, biased questions, that can guide someone to answer a certain way. We do have an open field on the feedback component as well, so that people can free-form. And are we receiving information as well about things that people don't want to see? Because I think that might be something to just, for our notation as well, as we look at the strategic plan.
We've only received a couple of comments so far.
Okay.
So hopefully, after this first public hearing, it'll bring a little attention to the process, and they'll start flooding in.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Sheffield.
I just wanted clarification on the website. You mentioned that it can be found at cobbcounty.org/...
Strategic Plan.
Okay. For those that may not know that, can, will it be on the county's landing page, on the main page?
It's on there now.
The link is on the main page. Okay, I just want to make sure. All right, thanks.
Okay. And just want to share for the public, and again, with respect to a comment that if we were to go back to the slide that had the circles on it in the subject areas, the Commissioners fleshed this out at our Board of Commissioners retreat based off of public feedback. So this is something that we worked on together to have some consensus in the Board of how we would tackle these things. Just wanted to make that clear. All right, thank you, Jimmy. Appreciate your presentation. Okay, with that, we are moving into our first public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. If you would, please state your name, and if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, the comment should be addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for our audience to, for audience members to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. We encourage everyone attending this meeting should give the others the right to both listen and to be heard, with treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinion of the Board or the Administration of Cobb County Government, and there's a five-minute, there's a timer on the podium for you to keep track of your time. The first speaker is Kristi Minor.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Kristi Minor of Cobb County. I'm a resident. I've been convicted this morning to read from the Book of Revelation, Chapter Nine, "The Bible warns of things to come." In verse 18, God tells us that one-third of the population are killed. I read now verses 20 and 21 from the King James Version. "And the rest of the men, which were not killed by these plagues, yet repented not of the works of their hands, that they should not worship devils and idols, and of gold and silver, and brass and stone and wood, which neither can see nor hear nor walk. Neither repented they of their murders, nor of their sorceries, nor of their fornication, nor of their thefts. I came before this body a month ago, on April 11th, 2023, presenting evidence that Cobb County may be experiencing an epidemic of sudden death and disability. I ask that the Board of Commissioners call upon the Board, Cobb Board of Health, to investigate. The mission statement reads, Cobb and Douglas Public Health, with our partners, promotes and protects the health and safety of residents of Cobb and Douglas Counties. If there is indeed such an epidemic here in Cobb that would increasingly impact not only our emotional health, but threaten to further reduce the labor pool and our economy, this certainly seems like the agency to initiate the investigation. During this fiscal year, starting July 1 of last year, Cobb Public Health has identified 26 people in Cobb that are HIV-positive. Seven of the 26 were identified between their February and April meetings. Through their ending the epidemic HIV program funded by our federal tax dollars, they have conducted over 3,000 tests to find those 26 people and connect those that will allow with services. Yet, in a similar two-month period, where seven were identified with HIV, I shared with you video clips of Chairwoman Cupid and Superintendent Chris Ragsdale reporting eight deaths of unknown cause, student and employees of Cobb. I attended the Cobb Board of Health meeting on April 20. There was no mention of an investigation to rule out an epidemic of sudden deaths, no attempt to counter the data presented in the book Cause Unknown by Edward Dowd that demonstrate that, as expected, there was a slight increase in all-cause mortality in 2020 with the COVID epidemic, but an unexpected exponential explosion in all-cause death and disability in 2021 and 2022. We deserve to know if Cobb is being likewise impacted. I invite those that are willing to please pray with me. Oh dear heavenly Father, you show us right in your word that we are of such a nature, a fallen nature, that we could see one-third of the population die and go on our merry way. Lord, please let that not be Cobb County. Take away our pride that allows us to, to ignore people that are coming forward, to, to gaslight them and to, to ignore them with their stories. Lord, I lift up the people that are suffering in our community. The oncologist who is weary after a 300% growth in her caseload. The nurse who's terrified with the explosion that she's seeing in saddle pulmonary embolism, something that was rare at one time, but now is, seems to be a dime a dozen, and having lost even a young coworker in her mid-30s only recently. The labor and delivery staff that don't know what to do with the fetal demise. Lord, we need you. We desperately pray for your presence. Lord, I pray for the, the leaders here in this room and across the departments of Cobb County. Please strengthen them, give them courage and protection, not only the leaders here, but across our state and our nation. Lord, only you are able to shine a light and cast out the darkness, and we, we ask you to do that for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kevin Redmond.
Hi. Good morning, Kevin Redmond. Also a proud member of Commissioner Richardson's Community Cabinet as her East Cobb Liaison. I'm actually up here as a friend, and he doesn't know I'm doing this right now, but Charlie Monroe over at the Parks Department is looking for volunteers this weekend for a fishing-for-fun event. So they're looking for volunteers to join the Georgia Department of Natural Resources in assisting in teaching fishing basics such as how to bait a hook, cast a reel, remove a fish from a hook, or how not to litter. So if you don't know how to fish, and, but you do also know how not to litter, you can come and volunteer. He is looking for, for people this weekend. It'll be at Hyde Farm from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. You can reach out to Charlie Monroe just through the county website, charlie.monroe@cobbcounty.org. Just wanted to say one quick thing about Charlie. I've actually gotten to know him. Recently, I've been shooting some videos around gardening here in the community. I got to meet Charlie Monroe, and he runs the community gardens here for the county, so if you, your area is looking for a community garden, he can help you out with that. And I was shooting some video about his garden, and he said something I'll never forget. He said, "Community gardening is 90% community and 10% gardening." So that's been really the whole intent of really just trying to shoot these videos, trying to find something that people can sort of rally around, but it's also just something people can do in their community, get to know each other more. So this, this whole effort, though, just to shoot these videos was kind of boring. I was standing in line over there for, for over two hours, as, as we do these days, with, I was talking to William Parker and Craig Hardfoot, and Craig and I were just kind of getting to know each other, and we're just talking about how it's important for those of us who are actually showing up and trying to participate to just find some common ground. And somehow Craig and I ended up on just gardening. And so he was just talking about how it's important for even kids these days to learn how to grow their own food, and I think we saw that during the pandemic, it was, you know, when supply chain became threatened. And it's also just a, just a way to save money. It's also a way just to keep your, your mind busy. So I had these number of videos of people from the community talking about what it means for them. Sometimes it's sustainability, and sometimes it's just a fun hobby for them to do or the community. So anyway, you can find those videos. If you go to d2cob.com/eascobb, click on the YouTube button, all the videos. It's the most fun thing I just did. So Charlie brought me over to Hyde Farm to meet G E. They had over 75 volunteers working on the farm. So I actually got to interview and talk to the CEO of G E's. Gas Power set videos on there, and that got sent off to their 20,000 employees. So just really giving some exposure to what the county is doing, even our parks. So we appreciate the Parks Department, everything they're doing, their vision to really bring to the community some really quality programming. So, thank you.
Thank you. Phil, before you go to the next speaker, I just have a general inquiry. Matters are shared that may pertain to a particular department. I believe we have that department's manager or someone provide letter of response to our speakers?
Yes, usually that's what happens.
Okay.
And the County Manager usually coordinates that.
Okay.
She keeps track of what happens.
Okay. I would just ask for that initial speaker, if we can get those comments to Dr. Memark, even though I know it's outside our scope. Yeah, thank you.
The next public speaker is Christine Rosman.
Good morning again. Christine Rosman, City of Marietta. I attended the All-In for Cobb Gala on Thursday, and actually, just walking up there, I was surprised. I thought, where are all the police cars? Where are those sheriff's deputies' cars? Because all other events held, there's always a huge presence. And I was surprised, but then, once I got in there and then realized that it was mostly your folks that were attending this gala, then it was very few of the patriots, then I realized why. And then also, that I hadn't known, and I would have definitely attended the memorial service that was being held the exact same night for fallen officers in Cobb County. Because if we're All-In for Cobb, that would certainly, certainly would include our law enforcement. I mean, we honored them today, but I thought that was a little disingenuous to have that whole event, and I don't believe they were acknowledged. I don't know. I, I left early. But that surprised me. What also surprised me, because I thought, All-In for Cobb, then why is there a Fulton County, City of Atlanta caterer? Because I'm sure that was a pretty penny for that. And I thought, well, if I were a caterer and I had a business here in Cobb County, I'd think, well, I'd like to have that business, because having to put up with the pandemic rules, that would have been like the least that could have been done. But once looking on his website, I did notice that they were all, you know, a minority business, and it was LGBTQ, so maybe there weren't minority and LGBTQ caterers in Cobb County, and that's why we kowtowed to Fulton County. Because it was kind of feeling like, just watching that event, and knowing what happened the rest of the day, it was All-In for the A R C more than All-In for Cobb. That just seemed like that, you know, when we look at, and I know I talk about, a lot about the A R C and Deloitte and Essenture, but like, just looking what was presented earlier, with, you know, what the plans are for Cobb County, they reek of everything A R C. And frankly, I was down in Fulton County last, two weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, and attended their Fulton County Board of Commissioner meeting, and that was in for support for Bridget Thorn. support for Bridget Thorn, Commissioner Bridget Thorn, because she had gotten accosted by her colleagues up at the dais the month before. And out of support, several of us went down there. Because we know what that looks like and feels like. Because we've seen a little bit too much of that animosity and contempt in our own county. And it was interesting, and I would like to commend all of you, because none of you walk away for public comment. There's a commissioner down there, Marvin Arlington, Arrington, the junior or the third, he leaves the dais as soon as public comment, because he doesn't want to hear what anybody has to say. And good thing he was not there, because somebody kind of called him out for some of his behavior, for having called Bridget Thorn a Karen at that previous meeting. Yeah, and they do have a lot of contempt up there. The, and I know I'm going to kill her name, is Kadaya Abdurrahiman, the commissioner for just berating Bridget Thorn on that. So, again, I'm glad that we don't do that, but we're surprised that, what was, I guess her real name or original name was Beverly Jackson, I should just say that before she changed it. I noticed in an article that was written by Sheila Edwards, that she was commenting on some of the things that happened at the All In For Cobb, and some of your comments of, you know...
Ms. Rosman, I'm sorry, your five minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rosman, I'm sorry that you didn't stay for the event, because during the event, we did recognize and honor those in public safety. That event was moved multiple times out of respect for a number of things going on in the county. Certainly, it's not my heart to do things that would compete with the men and women that helped to keep us safe. So, I just want to make sure that I address that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And those weren't necessarily my people there, those were Cobb County citizens. And if Cobb County citizens are my people, then they were present. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Pamela Riordan.
I think it is, okay.
Yes.
Good morning.
Got a lot of morning left.
I know, long morning so far. I just want to preface my comments in that I love you, Jerika. I love you, Ms. Cupid. I love you, Monica. I love you, Burrell. I love you, Kelly. All right? So, what I'm about to say, I still, I love you, Jackie, and everyone else. Okay. And I really like that the gentleman was up here and talked about fishing. I love fishing, and I love gardening. I love pets. I love recycling. I love a comfortable living. I love Cobb County. I've lived here since 99. 10 years in Fulton County, I left Fulton County for Cobb County. Much better, right? Before that, I came from New York for two years, and before that, from Canada. I was born and raised in Canada, but I think I've lived more time now in the U.S. But I come before this commission to address something that really, really bothers me. And I don't like to address it, but I'm going to. I attended the prayer breakfast last Thursday morning in Cobb County, National Prayer Day. It was a great event until Ms. Cupid stood up and went for the benediction near the end. Now, this is the way that MDJ described it. Lisa Cupid, Chair of the Cobb Board of Commissioners, gave a closing benediction during the service. Though it was less of a blessing than it was a speech focused on shooting and its ramifications. We've got, I think, this is her words, "We've got to, I think, ask ourselves what we can do to ensure that there are no more victims of senseless violence," Cupid said. It totally wrecked the tone because it was so political. We were expecting a closing prayer and then a closing music, which, you know, helped to change our moods back to what it had been. I'm going to show you another quote by Kimberly Savage. She attended, first-time attendee, she's with the Linked Up Church. "Being at a breakfast was important for seeing God at work, inspiring people to embrace their connection to prayer. Praise and worship and acknowledging who God is in our lives and in the room reminds me," or, yes, reminds her, me, "we don't have to be ashamed of the gospel of Christ and that we have more that joins us or unites us than that separates us when we keep God at the center," Savage said. I wish we could focus on that, and I wish that we could get away from calling people racist, which unfortunately, the chair did in the evening at her event. When we come to this podium and talk, we are adamant about our values and the way we want our government to run. We are not racist. We are just having a different point of view. We don't agree that the budget was 800 million, and now it's $1.2 billion since this board took over. We don't agree that we have to raise taxes and increase spending, because spending gives us inflation, just so you know. But we cannot be one Cobb if we have a commissioner who is dividing us. I'm just putting it out there. I disagree with the open border that we have right now. And where are we going to get the 200,000-plus people that are moving here? Hopefully, it's not coming from the open border, just saying, they're not vetted. I disagree with the increase in density that's going to be planned along the transit lines. I disagree with the ARC, because they used to be, they're really entrenched now in Cobb, they used to be just a watershed control commission, and now it seems they're a progressive arm of MARTA. If we get a 30-year, 1% tax increase, it's going to go to MARTA. We do not want MARTA in Cobb County. It's going to increase our crime. Thank you very much.
The next public speaker is Debbie Fisher.
I'm Debbie Fisher from East Cobb County. I'm speaking on my own behalf.
Hold on for just one second. If we can just have those in the audience.
Pardon me?
I just heard speaking over yours, and I couldn't hear you, so I was just waiting for those in the audience to complete speaking so that we can hear you adequately.
Are you done?
I think so. Go ahead.
Is my time started yet? I hope not.
It hasn't started yet.
Okay. Pardon me?
It hasn't started yet.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. I've been quite interested, as you all know, about the home rule resolution. So, I've been following the lawsuit that has been filed, and I did have the privilege of reading Cobb County's response to the filing. And I have to say, I come up here and speak about a lot of things that are upsetting, but this has got to be one of the most egregious responses that I've ever read from Cobb County. And I think the public has the right to know the position of our county attorneys and this board. So, I'm going to read the complaint, and I'm going to read the response. This is the allegation number 16. Residents of District 1 and 3 voted for their commissioners in the 2022 general election. Act 562 provided that the new boundary lines would not be implemented until January 1st, 2023. And the purported amendment of the map contained in the county's resolution also had an effective date of January 1st. However, Act 562 provided the elections for District 1 and 3 would be undertaken according to new legislative redistricting maps. Therefore, Cobb County residents of District 1 and 3 voted in November 2022 based on the districts as set for in the legislative redistricting map. On November 8th, the Cobb County Board of Elections certified the 2022 election results according to legislative redistricting maps. County's response. With regard to the first sentence of paragraph 16, Cobb County admits residents of District 3 voted for a county commissioner in 2022 general election, but denies that residents of District 1 voted for a county commissioner in the 2022 election. Aren't you kidding me? That's unbelievable. That's not written in here, by the way. With regard to the second paragraph, they admit both HB 1154, please note they're not calling it Act 526, as originally passed by the General Assembly, and HB 1154 as amended in October by the BOC, provided new district lines. With regard to the third sentence of paragraph 16, Cobb County admits HB 1154 as originally passed by the General Assembly, provided the general elections for District 1 and 3 would be governed by the electoral district lines. And Cobb County states further that the amendment to HB 1154 also provided the original 1154 maps would govern the 2022 general election. With regard to the allegation in the third sentence, paragraph 16, Cobb County denies that residents of District 1 voted in November of 2022. Now, anybody who knows me knows I'm very interested in fair, free, transparent elections. This is the most egregious attempt at election interference that I've ever seen in my life, and that goes above and beyond the actual resolution for home rule. To deny that 72,000 people voted for Commissioner Gambrell is about as low as it gets. Congratulations, Cobb County, you hit a new low.
And the next speaker is Mr. Amkin.
Lee Ramkin, living in Cobb County for 23 years. I'd like to read an article published by Spotlight South Cobb News entitled "Cupid's State of Cobb County Turns Into State Of Contention Address." I'm just going to read what's in this article, no comments or opinion from me. Quote, "During her address to a half-filled room, Cupid bemoaned the ills to her life for having to spend time sitting at the dais, listening to citizens from the community complain about, complain during public speaking periods at commission meetings. How dare these peasants come before her with complaints about their government or what is not happening within the community to improve the quality of life for citizens? Also, we should forget the move Cupid tried to make to end or reduce public comment, which saw a huge outcry by citizens of her efforts to eliminate these irritants to her role as chair. Cupid also took issue with having to read unflattering press, which usually follows her unflattering decision-making. At the time of the list, at the time, at the top of the list is spending millions of tax dollars for consultants to tell Cupid how to do her job? When she campaigned for the job, Cupid said she would be able to make decisions by using the resources and talented staff that the county employs to do the people's work. Choosing the latest consultant and paying them top dollar is not work, it's relegating your responsibilities to others. Anyone can do that, and it is suspected that many will test that theory when Cupid comes back for reelection next year. Pointing out her issues with Republican commissioners also took center stage at the State of the County meeting. Cupid's actions to remove them from the dais may be the cause of that, but she will never acknowledge that she contributed to the friction. Also, when she tossed them out off the dais earlier this year and threatened them with law enforcement, Cupid disenfranchised the people that voted for them and the communities they represent in their areas of the county. Political polarization is being home-cooked by Cupid and clearly shows she is incapable of bringing people together despite claims to the contrary. During the address, Cupid said, quote, "I never see, I've never seen prior boards of commissioners be treated the way that we do," unquote. But that is not true. If you have lived long enough in Cobb, you have seen fights and disagreements, including many infamous ones witnessed between Cupid and the late chairman, Tim Lee. We do not know why Cupid thought things would be different once she became chair. Cupid claims she is an advocate of affordable housing, but this also falls on deaf ears. People in South Cobb are very familiar with Cupid's efforts to block habitat housing and her failure to develop Magnolia Crossing, a 50-acre hole in the ground, which now sits in the new city of Mabelton. Our hope is that with a new city and new leadership, that hole in the ground will turn into an economic development windfall for the community. During her speech, Cupid mentioned Mabelton, but everyone in South Cobb knows Cupid did not support cityhood because it diluted her power. Citizens wanted Mabelton's cityhood because they were not getting what they needed from the county. Since cityhood passed in November 2022, Cupid has done little to nothing in support of the new city. During recent elections for the mayor and city council, Cupid failed to use her role as chair to encourage citizens to go out and vote. Cupid mentioned that a personal goal of hers this year would be addressing homelessness, which is striking. The question for many is what was happening all the previous years you were commissioner and the years as chair with respect to homelessness? An evening with Cupid would not be complete unless she introduced race to defend or complain about whatever's going on with her. This time, it was credited for the unfair criticism she gets on her leadership. The chairman, the chairwoman said the attacks on her administration were unprecedented and implied they were totally racially motivated? Despite spending the better part of a two-hour meeting and complaining, Cupid says she wants to move the county forward to be, and to be more connected in the region. One reader suggested her time would be better served connecting with the people of Cobb. Contentuous swipes at the media, at residents who speak at Board of Commissioners meetings, and her fellow commissioners is what people walked away from, from Cupid's State of the County address. This address showed that when it comes to collaboration and coalition building with citizens, or even with her fellow commissioners in the county, Cupid gets an F, as she also pointed to the need to hire more consultants to do her job during her address.
Mr. Amkin, your time's up.
Thank you.
Unquote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chairwoman, that concludes the first portion of the public comment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Trying to think when I mentioned race at all, or it's just odd to be impugned with being a racist by those who bring up race more than I do. With that being said, we will move on to the consent portion of our meeting. These matters have been scrolling on the screen prior to our meeting, and will be scrolling on the screen after the meeting. These meetings are items that are voted in bank. One moment, commissioners. Please note that Agenda Item 13 has been revised. I believe that's the only item. Okay, with that, commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second?
Is there any discussion?
Second in discussion.
Yes, Commissioner.
Item number 22. I do have one question for Mr. Boltman.
Bill, if you can approach, this is the matter with respect to Cobb... Bill, if you can approach, this is the matter with respect to Cobb travel and tourism.
Thanks, Bill. I know we've had many conversations about this, and I have also spoken to Holly Quinlan and county manager. I know that this transferring, I have an issue with transferring special service district funds to the general fund. However, we keep mentioning that the police overtime and other things that are in the general fund now would be paid for by the special service district because they are in the boundary lines. And we've been trying to get rid of the police overtime almost a million a year for a long time. And at one time, we did have the breakdown of the special service district and what percentage was going to circulator, police, and the stadium debt, and Cobb travel and tourism. So I know we've talked about it, but where's the guarantee that the special service district will cover the police, the stadium debt, the circulator, and those, those things that we talked about if we transfer Cobb travel and tourism out?
Commissioner, that's a great question. So first of all, 100% of the revenue collected in the special service district is transferred to the general fund. It is then what you choose to do with it within the general fund, because it is still legally restricted for that special service district. So we collect $3.6 million. 100% of that goes into the general fund, is under the new proposal. Currently, under our previous MOU with Cobb travel and tourism, we did cut, we did make a contribution from that service district to fund Cobb travel and tourism. Under the new proposal, 100% will go to the general fund, but that doesn't change its restriction. So what we're going to do is, under this new proposal, is basically transfer 100% over that, over from, excuse me, still fighting some allergies here. We're going to transfer 100% of that revenue, which is around $3.5, $3.6 million, to the general fund. We are going to cover the debt service first, and as we shared in our presentation today, that netted you 400K. If you transfer 100% of it over and we fund Cobb travel and tourism under the proposed agreement, that now frees up additional monies from that service district that can be solely focused on those items that you just discussed. So what we can do is clearly show you each year when we provide the annual update, this is how much we collected, this is how much we transferred, and this is exactly what we used it for. Because whether it's paid out of the CSSD-1, the service district, or the general fund, the restrictions still apply. So we have to use it within that service district, and we're going to, at your request, as part of the 2024, which will be the first year, if this MOU is approved today, that it'll take effect, we're going to provide you that budgeted breakdown as well when we present you the adopted budget to show this is how we're going to pay for all of the items within the battery area, including debt service, PD overtime, as you mentioned, circulator, as well as the stadium capital maintenance annual contribution. So that is our plan to show you that is the proposed budgetary lines. And then also, as Commissioner Gambrell brought up in our presentation, we will follow up with you with saying, here's our budget, this is how it actually performed. Ideally, those numbers will be even better than what we budgeted, because we do do that very conservatively, and our goal is always to minimize the impact on the general fund. So this proposal is a win-win in a lot of areas. It will allow us to address those specific areas like, again, stadium debt service, stadium capital maintenance, PD overtime, circulator, with the restricted use of funds that all take place within that restricted area, and then also contribute, continue to fund Cobb travel and tourism at a same level that they're being funded under the previous, or under fiscal year 2023. But now, those funds are unrestricted, so they can go where the events are. I know that was one of the big, big selling points of this in conversations with the board, of how do we do that at a same funding level with no impact? But again, to address your point of, by doing that, you're now using those restricted funds instead of general fund dollars to fund PD overtime, circulator, and stadium capital maintenance. So as far as the commitment, I can show you with the 2024 adopted budget if this is approved, because that is the first step, is to say, this is how our plan is to move forward. The adopted budget will further show that. And then again, the follow-up at the end of 2024 to say, this is how we actually did it. So it's going to follow those, those same criteria.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gambrell?
I have a follow-up question for you, Bill.
Yes, ma'am.
And just to lighten the humor, we know who you sat next to yesterday.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said, and just to lighten the humor, we know who you sat next to yesterday. The allergies?
Yes, I did. I heard him coughing in the back, so there was a couple moments where I could hear what y'all were saying.
Just to lighten the mood a little bit here.
I think you might hear him recently there in the back. He's waving.
Yeah, he, he knows. So where I struggle with this is this amount, this, which is roughly going to be about $2.3 million a year that we're going to be giving to Cobb travel and tourism. This is what we used to pay them just to do services within the CID. So now we're going to expect them to do the same services countywide for the same amount of money. Where I struggle even more is the fact that our parks department has done a great job of getting our parks full. So how are we expecting with the staffing that we have, the resources that we have to have more parks? I understand the argument is, is, oh, well, we can get them to stay in the hotels more evenings, but our hotels are already full. So again, having them be engaged countywide, I'm still not seeing the overall benefit to the citizens of Cobb County in doing this move, except for a shell game, because we also know that that $3 a night was supposed to go to cover specific items, which it hasn't. Therefore, it's always been subsidized from the general fund.
So a couple, a couple points to that. In the original projection that we shared today, in the battery update, we showed from the beginning that $2.75 million of the $3 room night was going to fund the debt service. And that was part of the slide in the original projections. Now, the difference of that was to cover the circulator. Now, that was the original projection. Since then, the board has made several decisions in which, where those dollars will go. We've gone, in years past, we've covered some of the PD overtime, and we've also funded the circulator. So that has been fluid, and it definitely changes at the will of the board of saying, what is your priorities to fund? Another example of that is we decided to fund Cobb travel and tourism to help support the tourism community within Cobb out of the service district. So that is definitely not set in stone, and that is subject to the board's approval each and every year as we move forward. And obviously, as, if we approve this MOU, that would come off the table from the $3 room night, so that would be a little bit of a difference. So again, it's great to have a plan, but again, that plan has to be solidified each year when the board approves the budget. So it is, it is a fluid plan until that vote is take place, and then it's locked in for that, that one year, and then we vote again. As far as the, the reasoning for this is there was a desire amongst the board to continue to fund Cobb travel and tourism because it felt was beneficial to the county as a whole. Having had several conversations with each of the board members, working very closely with Cobb travel and tourism, Holly Quinlan herself, we tried to look at it in an approach that would allow them flexibility to go where the events are. This is not to say that they won't do events in the battery area, because if there's a big event in there, they will have a presence. But as we know, events are all over the place within the county, and they change year to year. So this allows them basically to fund them at the same level, but to really go where the events are. And to your point, this isn't necessarily a direct benefit to parks, this is all type of tourism events. Parks is definitely a key component of that, and I think that was one of the things that she was able to share when we looked at that. They try to tell the story of the area in which the event is, and Cobb County as a whole, when we're trying to attract, attract big events and big venues. All of those are direct benefits. Tourism is the highest revenue source that we have in Cobb County. So I believe in 2018, when the board approved the first MOU, they saw the benefit of that investment, and this is basically keeping that funding level as it is today, but allowing them more flexibility within that, that space.
So as a follow-up, though, since we're now going to be taking this out of the general fund instead of out of our $3 night hotel motel.
Yes.
And this is, again, this is going to go, Jackie, to the discussions we're having with the cities with our 489 agreements. I mean, technically, because each of the cities also pay Cobb travel and tourism for fees, so how is that going to impact our negotiations that we are currently in under our 489 agreement?
I didn't know if that was rhetorical or whether you were asking me, I'm sorry.
No, it is a question, because again, now we are going to be impacting the 489 agreement in a way that we've never had before because we're funding it out of the general fund.
I think those are discussions that we will flush out with the cities as we look at other things as well. I don't want us to have the notion that it's going to be a negative impact, because we're just beginning to have those discussions, and there's a lot of services that we provide. So I think that is one of the areas that we will talk about when we sit down with the cities to talk about other things that are included or should not be included in SDS.
So, Bill, this, this is just for the, the agenda item here is just for the transfer. So will the distribution, the breakdown, come back to us, and what, and can we get the commitment with this?
Yes, absolutely. So yes, I mean, that's the big part, is this is really step one. I can't give you what the breakdown is in 2024 without knowing whether the board supports or does not support this, because it would have an effect on the breakdown as we move forward. Yes, if the board approves that, that is currently what we're working on today. We're in budget meetings with the commissioners to walk the halls, to determine priorities, funding levels, and all that for the 2024 budget, but it will be part of the presentation to say, this is how we're paying for it. But absolutely, that is my commitment to you. I'll work very closely with the, the county manager's office and the chairs as we develop the budget to provide that breakdown, because we know, at the end of the day, you have a requirement to pay the debt service. We have a requirement to fund the stadium capital maintenance, and we know there will be PD overtime as it relates to keep the public safe at these, at the battery area. So we, we understand that. Those all have to be paid, is you're, you're just simply choosing how you want to pay that. And that's why this, the beauty of this agreement was to give you that flexibility without having a financial impact to the general fund.
And Commissioner, we can give you guys a quarterly update if you would prefer. Whatever cadence you want to be updated, we're happy to do that. And at any point in time we need to pivot, we can also do that as well.
Yeah.
The agreement renews annually, so, you know. I think that's an opportunity, if there's, to provide feedback, where we can get in and reassess if we're doing the right thing. But I know for a long time, we've been talking about providing support for the whole county. It's something that I know I've shared when I had the opportunity to serve on Cobb travel and tourism, and I believe most of us on the board have had that opportunity. And, you know, they do much more than just promote events, they promote the whole county. And there's more to the county than just events. There, it's just a spirit of activity that I think that they help to promote all throughout the county that they'll have the ability to do more robustly. And I apologize, Commissioner Burrell, if you weren't done with your comments, but I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that we, there's, there's ample benefit that has been discussed for some time. This is not just, this is not about money movement. This is about moving money to help promote the entire county, which I know that's where their heart is.
And, and I, I get that and understand that, but they also receive hotel motel tax money from the Cobb Galleria Authority that they can use countywide. And I just want to guarantee, and that's not there today. It may be coming, but it's not going hand in hand with this agenda item today.
So Commissioner, to your point, we will absolutely provide you all that reporting detail, but again, it's, this is to know where that funding is coming from, and once this is approved, we can begin working on it, and we could even give you a draft as we finalize numbers to show you what that will look like, and happy to share it, happy to provide you updates throughout the year as we move forward.
Okay.
Yes.
But is this board committed to funding out of the special service district? The police overtime, the stadium debt, the circulator, and the capital maintenance? Because that's all part of, the capital maintenance, the stadium debt is all part of the, the MOU, and the traffic control from overtime for police. It's all part of the Braves MOU, so.
Yes.
I'm grateful that we have much more flexibility to do that. This doesn't, this doesn't hamstring that, it actually gives us greater opportunity to consider those things. This is not part of this agenda.
That has to be agreed upon.
So, so Commissioner, if I can just add, is that by doing this, you have now, the only obligation you have for the $3 room night is for those things that you just identified. That is, that is the only obligation now that is outstanding for that service district. And that is the, that is the purpose of that, those funds. I mean, they are restricted for that, that one area of the county, and all of those things that you mentioned fall within that area of the county. So now you have removed any obligations outside of those things that you specifically mentioned, stadium debt, PD overtime, circulator, and stadium capital maintenance. So I think you, by, I won't say by voting yes, but by voting yes, you are essentially removing any of that obstacle stand, saying those monies are now obligated solely for that, because there's not another board-approved obligation to consider for those funds, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. I know we've talked lots, lots about this, so I, I understand.
So this is.
Sorry.
This is a consent agenda, and we're voting on these in bank. So if you would like to support this in your vote, then we'll just go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. But if you do not want to support this item, you have the ability to do that as well.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions with respect to the consent agenda? Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Gambrell?
Just to record my statement, that is on page 141 of the current agenda, please, prior to every vote.
And mine, too. Thank you. Totally forgot.
Okay, we had a lot of discussion, I believe. We had a motion and a second before we moved into discussion.
Clerk, can you just remind me? We had a motion and a second. Okay, thank you.
And then for further discussion, I'd like to note my objections to item number 13 and 22 of the consent agenda.
And just for the public's awareness, 13 pertains to implementing a Breeze Mobile Regional Mobile Ticketing System on Cobb Link's Transit Bus Fleet, and 22 is the item that we were just discussing with Cobb Travel and Tourism.
And I believe, Madam Chair, we had a revised agenda for 13.
Yes, we do.
Revised sheet, okay.
Yes, I recognize that. Are there any other comments or questions, Commissioners? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We are now moving to our DOT regular tab.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Department of Transportation has four items for your consideration this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $430,851 for drainage system repairs on Stony Creek Overlook Project Number B 2228. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Commissioner Sheffield?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $7,799,277.90 for improvements on Silver Comet Trail Connector Project Number X 2415, and Atlanta Road Bridge over CSX Railroad Project Number B 2112. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the consultant services agreement with BCC Engineering LLC, doing business as Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $13,707 for additional engineering services of Kennesaw Mountain Pedestrian Improvements Project Number X 2404. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize advertisement for in conduct of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for engineering design services for 2022 Splosh Transportation Improvements Program Sidewalk Projects, and authorize issuance of task orders to secure required services.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Just hoping we, I'm excited about these, hoping we can get those other ones going, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I need a five-minute break. Let's come back at 11:01. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this May 9th. Our next tab that we'll be hearing today is with respect to public services.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. I apologize, I was sitting next to Bill and I've got some of his allergies, so I apologize.
I understand. It can be contagious.
We have two items for consideration this morning. First item this morning is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Pond and Company to provide design, cost estimating, bid assistance and construction administration services for Ebenezer Downs Park under the 2022 Parks SPOSS Program. Ebenezer Downs Park will be an 18.3 acre passive park off Ebenezer Road in northeast Cobb County. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract in an amount not to exceed $238,450. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Just in time. Thank you. Long time coming. We are all excited.
Yes.
So let's get started. Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Our second final item this morning is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Dyken Applied Americas Incorporated to provide installation of Suresco dehumidification units at Mountain View South Cobb and West Cobb Aquatic Centers. The current units are past their useful service life and need replacement. A previously approved agenda item secured the purchase of the units themselves. This agenda item is for the installation of those units as well as exhaust fans at South Cobb, South Cobb and necessary controls at each facility. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract in an amount not to exceed $816,118.59. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Purchasing Director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
We'll move next to our purchasing tab or our support services tab. I don't have purchasing in my book, but I see the screen says support services. Let's just say we have our purchasing director here with us, Roger Ball.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. Our item this morning is to request the Board of Commissioners approve the ranking of the top three qualified firms to conduct a disparity study of the county's procurement practices and authorize negotiations for final scope and fee beginning with the top-ranked firm.
All right, Commissioners, I move that we approve this item as it has been presented. Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries three, two, with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition. We will now move on to our Department of Public Safety tab. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Fire has one item for your consideration today. We are asking the Board to approve a supplemental agreement number one in the amount of $16,136,550 with John W. Spratlin and Son LLC to establish the guaranteed maximum price of $17,836,550 for the construction of the new fire training grounds, which is located at 2109 Ballard Drive. It is also part of the 2022 SPOSS Program XB 104. And to also authorize the corresponding budget transactions and to further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, so moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Burl.
We were out at the new fire training center a couple of weeks ago for graduation and it is amazing improvement and totally new look.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm sure this will go a long way to completing the full scale of the, of the new building.
Yes, ma'am. This will be phase two and phase three of that project. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Any other comments? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we're at our second public comment.
Yes, Chairwoman. The first public speaker is Monica Delancey.
Bill, how many speakers do we have?
Monica Delancey, We Thrive in Riverside Renters Association. First, I'd like to acknowledge this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So make sure you send all of your goodies, thank you cards, phone calls to all of our educators, whether teachers, parole pros, custodian, janitors, principals, parents. We're all teachers. So make sure we recognize that. Also, I want to thank Chairwoman Cupid and Commissioner Sheffield for attending Family Life Restoration Center, Lake Crossing Family Dinner. Family Life Restoration Center did a wonderful job planning the dinner, organizing the event, blessing those families. Not long did you have dinner with them, but you sat and listened to them and heard their concerns. Being homeless is frightening and especially when you don't have no, it wasn't your fault. It was just basically, you know, hey, things happen. And so, so thank you for being there. Also, I want to congratulate Pastor Barry Smith with First Christian Church in Mapleton for hosting the South Cobb Resource Fair. He organized that long with Cobb Collaborative last Saturday and it was held in Mapleton Elementary School. But I also want to share about the eviction crisis. Last Friday, I attended eviction court with some residents who asked me to attend with them. And eviction court, once again, is, is increasing and majority of the people that's being evicted are black families. So what I would like for Cobb Commissioners to do is to have a monthly report about the eviction crisis. A monthly report to show how many people are actually on the rosters to be evicted and what are their outcomes? Whether they, do they move on their own or do, are they forcibly moved from their homes? I myself is facing retaliation eviction because I help renters. I advocate for renters. I've been fighting this cause for almost two years now and I plan on being victorious, but it's, it, it, it makes people afraid to speak up when you know that when you're speaking up to help people, that you're told that your lease not going to be renewed and they're going to deny your, they're going to deny your rent. People of color who have been systematically denied economic opportunities throughout history are especially impacted by the eviction crisis. Across the United States, eviction rates are highest in communities of color, often contributing to the further economic inequity in those areas. The eviction crisis must be tackled head on by creating and implementing policies that protect tenants from eviction, provide assistance to people facing eviction and help struggling renters stay in their homes. These solutions should focus on closing the racial wealth gap, increasing access to affordable housing and providing assistance for eviction-related costs. It is essential that we take action now to prevent homelessness caused by the eviction crisis. Ignoring this issue will lead to more people becoming homeless and more families being displaced from their homes. By addressing eviction directly, we can create a brighter future for everyone here in Cobb County. Thank you so very much.
Matt Stegall.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Stegall. I am a resident of District One and I serve on the Trans Advisory Board and I'm also a public advocate for better transit, safe streets, sustainability and fair housing and smart land use. And I say that because there are efforts to try to silence me or stop me from being a public advocate and I just want to make sure that there is no conflict of interest and I am standing up here as a citizen sharing my personal opinion and what I view as a better county. I just want to say a few comments related to today's meeting. I kind of got to go off script here because I thought there was going to be unanimous support for what was item number 13, which was the, the mobile ticketing for transit. And as a, I try to use transit as regularly as I can and using that mobile ticketing is a game changer for the transit experience. It was a very low-cost improvement to our system that drastically improves the experience of using transit. And so for anyone who is against simple improvements like that, I would invite, invite those Commissioners to, yeah, to take public transit and get the experience and, and figure out what improvements like that can do for the everyday transit user and even the person, the people who use transit occasionally or just when it best serves them. So hopefully in the future, we can have more unanimous support for improvements of, of that. I also want to thank all of you though, there was unanimous support for the, for the Silver Comet Trail Connector, which although it's not the ideal alignment, it is, it will be a safe, a safe route along Atlanta Road that will, it's not the entire corridor either, but it is a start and the county is doing what it can to connect the Silver Comet with the Belt Line in the City of Atlanta. I hope we get some more good news here in the near future about the rest of that corridor and eventually in the next couple, you know, in the near future, we're able to see the Silver Comet, which is used by so many users every day, connected to the Belt Line in the City of Atlanta, which will be just a drastic improvement for mobility in the region. Other than that, those are kind of the two comments today. I look forward to more improvements when it comes to mobility and safe streets in the future and, and hope that we continue, can continue moving forward as a county. Thank you.
The next speaker is David Fadell.
Hey, good morning, y'all. My name's David Fadell and I'm a private citizen of Cobb County. And I just want to just talk on a specific issue here. I attended the Cobb and Douglas Public Health Meeting on April 20th and I'll read the social media post right here. I learned of the event that you all put on on April 8th. It was National Youth HIV and AIDS Awareness Day Event. I'll read the post right here. It says, "Join us for a youth HIV/AIDS Awareness Day Event on Saturday, April 8th at Sparkles, Smyrna, 666 Smyrna Hill Drive, Southeast Smyrna, Georgia 30082, from 11:30 PM to 1:30 AM. Free onsite testing, condoms and HIV self-test kits." Now, you know, I'm, I'm no genius or don't claim to be, but you know, you're gathering kids and handing out condoms after hours into the wee hours of dark. Why are we promoting sexual activity amongst our youth and why are the citizens of Cobb County having to subsidize it? I posed this question right to you, Chairwoman Cupid, because you do, you do sit on the Board of the Cobb County Public Health. So.
You have your five minutes. You can use it all and I'll be happy to respond.
You can respond right now if you'd like.
Sir, I, excuse me, I'm responsible for decorum. You have five minutes and I'll be happy to address your comments.
Okay, well, I cede my time.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
We can go on to the next speaker and while he's seated, I will respond.
Craig Harfoot.
We have a Cobb Douglas Public Health Organization that is a subdivision of the state. We are just part of the jurisdiction and I serve on the Board. We're responsible for policy, not necessarily programming. They do support awareness. If you would like, I can get you in contact directly with those at Cobb and Douglas Public Health, but this Board does not have input into those type of programs. We do not have to have an adversarial relationship. I will help you get the answer that you desire. You are at that meeting and I'm sure you saw some of the actors there, so I can help you get in contact with the appropriate person and I'm sure the appropriate people will be back at that same meeting that you attended.
Okay.
My name's Craig Harfoot and resident of Cobb County. I was watching this online and I had to come after the Accenture first hearing. You didn't identify the stuff, the strategic plan is basically, I went to the retreat where you all made your comments on those and all it was, was the wording on the bullet points. You had no other input into that. And Accenture basically gave you a template and they didn't even have that many respondents to the whole system. But anyhow. many respondents to the whole system. But anyhow, that, that company is going to turn out to be one of the global nemesis's of, of the world. But anyhow, that MARTA, the, the transit plan. I lived in East Point. My first house, I bought a, a wreck of a twenties house and rebuilt it, and it was two blocks from the MARTA station. I, I lived in South Fulton County for fourteen years. And, um, I watched them destroy downtown East Point and downtown College Park, and they never came back, and they never used the stations in those cities for any kind of development. And it's right adjacent to the airport. And I can't see why they spent so much money bugging us with the ARC when they haven't even taken care of what's in Fulton County. And I mean, it goes all the way up to Vine City, and there's, it's, it's just nothing. It's desolation. And, um, and after I moved, it got worse. And after the last two thousand eight, it was worse. They never got developed. And I don't know why they're obsessed with a suburban community, because people want to, I mean, what I've realized is my neighbors, the people that were, oh, they were all up in this thing, like Council for Quality Growth, and Williams, and all them, they moved on to Gwinnett, they moved to South Carolina, they moved everywhere else. And, um, anyhow, the people voted against cities because they wanted suburban. And they don't want, um, you know, they don't, they're not looking for public housing. I, I worked right across from Westview Cemetery, where there was a huge public, um, housing community. They tore all those down in Atlanta. They literally demolished all the, the, the public housing. And they spread them to the suburbs. And, and then they started to gentrify the city, city core of Atlanta. And, you know, I don't know why this obsession with MARTA and ARC, and the thing is, the, the, the pricing. I never used that transit very much, and I, I could have, because it was on par with what it actually cost me to drive to work. And it still is at two-fifty for a ticket, to ride the bus, I mean, gas. You know, the, the way it works out, it, it's like you shouldn't live too far from where you work. If you do that, you're basically messed up from day one. The housing needs to be where the jobs are, and it has to be priced for what the jobs pay. And we've never had that, never. And, and the whole banking crisis, all the banks that made all the houses a hundred thousand more, they're all in trouble now. They're all gonna, and it's going to become one JP Morgan Bank when it's all said and done. And, and that isn't going to be good for anybody. So when you raise taxes, and you, you didn't roll them back, you exacerbated the housing crisis that the lady here was talking about, because they got to raise the rents, and then there's more evictions. And it, it's just never-ending. And you basically can't do what you're doing, because the Fed's going to keep raising rates, because inflation goes on, and the poor get wiped out, and they're homeless.
That's the last speaker on the board.
Okay. Thank you. We are now at our appointments tab, and I believe we have one appointment from Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to motion, make a motion to reappoint Rachel Gray to the Public Library Board.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now at our Commissioner's public comment, and we will begin with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. Before we start the slides, Mr. Stegall, this is a response to your question on why I voted no on Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Transit, this transit item was an improvement, um, which will assist in the collecting of the approximately one million dollars of revenue that we collect yearly. Yet it does nothing to address the eighteen to twenty-four million dollar subsidy. That has to be funded through the general fund each year, and that costs the taxpayers due to the operational shortfall in our bus system. Slide number one. Have a coffee and conversation with the Economic Development as they are hosting coffee and conversations with district businesses from seven-thirty AM to nine AM on Monday, May fifteenth, at the avenues of West Cobb, located at thirty-six-twenty-five Dallas Highway, Suite three-eighty in Marietta. The goal of Coffee and Conversations is to provide an opportunity for business owners, entrepreneurs, and startups to connect with county staff, network with neighboring businesses, and learn how Cobb is available to support their business growth. To RSVP, contact Brittany Ramison at seven-seven-zero-five-two-eight-one-zero-zero-nine, or email her at brittany.ramison@cobbcounty.org. Walk and Talk with the Commissioner. You can join us at nine-thirty AM on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, as we take another walk in the park. We will be at the Kennesaw Mountain Battlefield Park, and the starting point will be at nine-oh-two Chitum Hill Road in Marietta. Game Design and Creation. There's still time to register for tween game design and creation. Create your own game by learning from the pros. Register for this two-part program at cobbcat.org/events. This will be at the West Cobb Library at seventeen-fifty Dennis Kemp Lane Northwest in Kennesaw, Georgia, on Tuesday, May ninth and sixteenth, from starting at five PM. And this is geared for ages nine through twelve. Thank you.
We'll go on to Commissioner Richardson.
Yes. Uh, Happy Mother's Day to all those who celebrate coming up this weekend. Yes, thanks, Mom and Sugar, anyone that's ever met my family. So Sugar's down there in the corner with a big smile, and my mom's on the right side. We've decided we go into a photo booth at one of our family events. Uh, but just some other words, not everyone had a chance to meet their mom, or has a, um, a mother i- in their life at this point in time. So certainly, you know, recognize those in your life that have poured into you. They don't always look like mothers, or always are mothers, but, um, sisters, aunts, and so, so many others that you may just encounter in passing. Just give some recognition and reflection for what they put into your life. From the office, so, you all have heard quite a few times about Aaliyah's departure from our office. However, there will be a new assistant coming in, should be joining us soon. Um, it'll be Megan Postel, so bright smiles. And also, we have a trend going on in our office. Um, one of our interns just got a one-seventy-five on her LSAT, so congratulations to Linda. She's doing a fantastic job.
That's almost, yeah.
Yes, yes. For anyone that doesn't know, one-seventy-five out of one-eighty. So we, uh, I think we have a leaderboard going on in our office. Next.
They could start a tutoring company for LSAT.
Right to Read Event. So this also happened. Literacy is a crisis in our community, but it is not going unnoticed. In collaboration with Decoding Dyslexia, we had the screening of the Right to Read, which then proceeded into a frank discourse regarding the systemic pedagogical changes that must continue to take place in this state and nationwide to help our kids succeed. It's a nod to the state legislature's bills in support of literacy programs and funding for education. And so thank you, Laura Judge, for pulling this idea together, Decoding Dyslexia for helping bring it to the next level, and Marietta School System for supplying the venue and awesome voices from the staff. Thank you. It's our Time of the Month event. A big thank you to our outgoing cabinet member, Laura Judge, again, with Scrub Life Cares and WellStar for helping produce an amazingly interactive, entertaining, and educational community event. It's a topic that many do not discuss, but is tied to so many aspects of life, health, and even our opportunities. It was another successful acts of kindness and a chance to connect with others. Feel pre, feel free to support any of these nonprofits that have engaged with our Acts of Kindness series, um, especially, and you can definitely do that through volunteering. So. Community updates. Taste of East Cobb was successful yet again over this past weekend. I would like to extend a super congratulations to all the winners from the Taste of East Cobb, and draw your attention to one in particular, our very own Cobb Libraries. There was also jazz, there were also jazz bands from so many of our wonderful schools, Dodge and Dickerson, High Tower Trail, Walton Wheeler, and South Cobb High School. Congrats. Uh, oh, it looks like I'm missing one. Um, Read, Think, Talk Book Discussion Group. Get together in community to discuss literary themes, um, that can be, and these can be therapeutic and educational for the entire family. Sewell Mill is hosting a Read, Think, Talk Book Discussion Group next Wednesday from ten-thirty AM to twelve PM. The book is Hidden Valley, and the discussion is on mental health. You can register by going to, uh, you can contact Melissa White at seven-seven-zero-five-zero-nine-two-seven-one-one, or registering on cobbcounty.orglibraries. And it looks like one of my others fell off, but it's the songwriting, oh, no, it's here, Songwriting Workshop. Uh, so from April through August in the evenings, also at Sewell Mill, this bi-weekly workshop meetup will include some exercises to hone in your songwriting craft, as well as a chance to bring in your works in progress for feedback and fine-tuning. Our songwriting workshop is a great chance to get some perspective and encouragement from your fellow artists, whether you're a new musician, a seasoned songwriter, or somewhere in between. Please be sure to bring something to write with your accompanying instrument of choice. All styles, genres, and experience levels are welcome. Registration is required, and you can register by, uh, using that QR link that hopefully I spoke long enough for you to capture, if you're interested in going, five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you.
The Cobb County Animal Services is having their May adoption specials. It's time to make your dream a reality. All through May, you can adopt a dog thirty pounds and over, or a cat, twenty-five-dollar adoption fee. Take the guesswork out of pre-owned pets. Our pets are combo and heartworm-tested, microchipped, up-to-date on vaccinations, and spayed or neutered. For more information and to view the available pets, go to cobbcounty.org/pets. Also, from eleven-thirty AM to three-thirty P, to three PM on Monday, May twenty-second, you can stop by and see our fe, featured pets in the trailer, and there's no cost to adopt these during this special event. Community input is needed on the Northeast Cobb Road Project. The county is working to better understand the issues and needs of people who use the corridor of Cobb Parkway at McCollum Parkway, and Kennesaw-Dewes Road, and Old Forty-One Highway. The public engagement is a key element of this scoping study. There are two ways to provide your input. Visit cobbcounty.org/transportation, or click on the QR code on the flyer in the back of the room to access the study and provide comments on the interactive map. The first public hearing will be from six to eight PM this Thursday, May the eleventh, at the Ben Robertson Community Center, twenty-seven-fifty-three Watts Drive in Kennesaw. This will be in an open-house format with a looping presentation. Drop by to learn more about the project and to ask questions of the project team and staff. We appreciate your participation. If you're a veteran and are experiencing food insecurity, Veterans Affairs has joined forces with Musk Ministries to provide food for veterans' families and their families in surrounding areas. A mobile food pantry pickup day to provide food to veterans in need is two to three PM, Monday, May the fifteenth, at the Cobb Multi-Specialty Clinic, front parking lot at twelve-sixty-three Cobb Parkway North in Marietta. Veterans must sign up in advance and, and select VA Clinic as their pantry pickup location from the drop-down menus. Veterans must have transportation to the location. And coming May nineteenth through the twenty-first, at Holy Transfiguration Greek Orthodox Church, thirty-four-thirty-one Tricam Road in Marietta, the OPA Greek Festival. So come and enjoy your favorite homemade Greek goodies, music, dancing, and atmosphere as you make your way around the festival, experiencing the beauty of Greek culture. The hours are Friday, four PM to ten PM, Saturday, eleven AM to ten PM, and Sunday, eleven AM to four PM. And more information can be found at mariettagreekfestival.com. We had two more adoptions last week, um, for our Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Program, and this carries us up to two-hundred-and-thirty-six total adoptions. So pictured here on the left is, um, Mr. Gray. We are grateful to him for his twenty-one years of service in the U.S. Air Force, and providing a loving home, a loving and caring home to this little lady. And on the right, Mr. Embry and his family just adopted this black lab. She's hiding her face in this photo, but we can tell you she is a beauty. Thank you, Mr. Embry, for your five years of service to the U.S. Air Force and supporting this program. Veterans wishing to adopt should complete the adoption form and bring it to Cobb County Animal Service, Services, ten-sixty Al Bishop Drive, Marietta, and take home your new forever friend. For more information on the program and to view the available pets, you can go to cobbcounty.org/pets, or you can email me at joanne.burl@cobbcounty.org. And our Cobb District Attorney is hosting a town hall, and it will be, um, from six-thirty to eight PM Wednesday, May the tenth, at the South Cobb Regional Library, eight-oh-five Clay Road in Mableton. The event will provide an update on the Cobb Family Advocacy Center and other information from the Cobb Judicial Circuit. For more information, you can call seven-seven-zero-five-two-eight-thirty-eighty, or email Cobb District Attorney at cobbcounty.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll next go to Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. Happy Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. President George H.W. Bush designated May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in nineteen-ninety-two. The annual celebration honors the many contributions and accomplishments of Asian Americans, Pacific Islander Americans, and Native Hawaiians. In celebration, I leave you with this quote, "A single seed can turn into a forest, and a single heart can transform a nation." You're cordially invited to attend the inaugural swearing-in ceremony for Mableton Mayor and council members on Saturday, May thirteenth, from ten AM to twelve PM, at the South Cobb High School Auditorium, located at nineteen-twenty Clay Road in Austell. This event is free and open to the public. Registration is required. You may register at eventbrite.com to receive a ticket. To mark this special occasion, guests are asked to bring a canned good or non-perishable item, which will be collected and donated to local food banks in Mableton. The Youth Leadership Workshop Faces Inc., in partnership with Austell Community Task Force and Level Up, is hosting a youth leadership workshop for students ages ten through sixteen years of age. The workshop will focus on communication and leadership skills, developing a healthy mindset, and team-building activities. There will also be fun activities for attendees to enjoy. Children are encouraged to attend Saturday, May thirteenth, from ten AM to twelve PM at Sweetwater Mission, located at six-one-three-zero Hotel Street in Austell. Lunch will be provided. For more information, please contact Deborah Johnson at four-zero-four-three-nine-six-eight-zero-three-four, or you may scan the QR code that's on the screen. We're doing it again. We're rolling up our sleeves to combat litter on Saturday, June third, from eight AM to twelve PM for our annual litter cleanup. The district-wide event will bring awareness to the challenges that the district and county face regarding litter. face regarding litter. We hope that you can join me, Keep Cobb Beautiful, Cobb DOT, and our newly-elected Mableton Council members and the mayor, community stakeholders, and others as we put litter in its place. And finally, Happy Mother's Day. Have a Happy Mother's Day. Enjoy your celebration as your family and friends remind you of how much you are loved. And I also invite you to join me for our basket-making class in honor of Mother's Day this coming Friday at the Freeman Pool Senior Center from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Let me see if I have that address available. The address is 4025 South Hurt Road in Smyrna. Thank you.
Who's teaching that class?
I am. The supplies will be provided by me, so just come on down. Have a little fun.
Your Commissioner at work. All right, we'll go to the next slide. Enough words can't be shared with the tremendous effort of our Cobb County Police working in concert with many others in public safety, particularly those in the city of Atlanta and the city of Smyrna in apprehending the gunman last week Wednesday. This is attributed to us having a great regional relationship, which is important in many areas, particularly when it comes to public safety. And during the State of the County address, I highlighted that slide on the upper right of the Mayor of Atlanta and our own chief in the same screenshot, showing the significance of their partnership in us finding someone within hours, within hours, of a heinous event. And I'm grateful that not only were we helped by that partnership, but if you look at the screen on the far right and far left, and also the opposite bottom portion of the screen, those are images from our real-time crime center. This board helped to approve that in early 2021, and we've been utilizing that to help bridge all of the technology that we have across the county to help identify crime and specific people engaged in acts of crime. And this was vital to us being able to be as responsive as we were on Wednesday. So I think the support for their use of technology is sometimes controversial in how we integrate that in policing, but we certainly saw the value of that. I also want to share the value of us having community conversations around use of force, as I also shared in my State of the County address, in that the police in apprehending the gunman did not return the same force that he used earlier in the day. And if he was caught unalive, there have been people who may have supported a rhetoric that that was reasonable, and certainly with all that transpired, we can certainly see how it was. But I think them showing that they can return a gunman alive who took the act, took a life of someone else who shot other people, I think shows you the level of regard that our police have towards allowing people to have their justice in a court of law, and them doing their job in a way that I think we all felt very proud of last week, Wednesday. So again, kudos to our police department, and it's not just police. We have 911 that was engaged on that call, investigators. It's not just people you see in uniform. It was our Sheriff Department that was out also helping with things that day. So it was just a concert of people that come together, and a lot of people in public safety who we don't necessarily see every day. Okay, we can go to the next slide. I want to say thank you. Today is... We are in the middle of Appreciation Week for teachers and nurses. So any person who's in that profession, I want to say thank you. Thank you for all that you do in keeping our community safe, healthy, and our young ones educated and taken care of every day. Speaking of young ones, I'm very excited about our partnership with Select Cobb in administering $5 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds to support our childcare and early learning center providers. Providers can get up to $20,000 per location, and this is based on $2,500 per employee. If you have an at-home daycare, you can get up to $5,000 per home childcare center. This money is not first come, first served. We worked with the Department of Early Childhood and Learning. We also worked with Cobb Collaborative and WorkSource Cobb, in addition to Select Cobb with the Chamber, to identify the number of providers so that we can provide funding for any one of them that is licensed here within Cobb County. Please visit www seleccobb.com/grants. It's www seleccobb.com/grants for more specific information on this phenomenal opportunity that we have here to support the backbone of working families. As was said by many of our Commissioners, Happy Mother's Day. We're certainly grateful for our moms and for the moms that serve along with us as we serve here in Cobb County. And also, congratulations to our 2023 graduates. In fact, I won't be able to attend the Mableton graduation. I'm going to see my niece graduate from college. But a lot of young people are graduating from our high schools and institutions of higher learning, and just commend you on that commitment that you've had, and we look forward to you doing great things. And hopefully, you will invest in your career in finding employment here in Cobb County so we can keep all of that brain power in making Cobb the best that it could be. With that, everybody, thank you for joining our meeting, and have a great rest of the week.